Hold my other laptop, I can only get one.
Yeah, you're on.
Right.
You're on. Okay, zoom. Okay, got it, good, okay, we're live on YouTube and we're recording.
And we still have iPhone unidentified, by the way.
I know, but I'm not letting them in, I've let them in twice and asked them to identify and they haven't, so.
I've seen it on my participant screen as iPhone.
Yep, oh, it's still in there, okay. Hold on, let's see. Why is this doing this?
There is one person on the participant listed as iPhone, they're muted and.
Okay, so we're going to. Put in waiting room there, okay. So we can go whenever you're ready.
Okay, how about if we start, I got YouTube running, everything's running.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, good evening ladies and gentlemen, welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting. The zoning commission to see you Danbury, November 23rd, 2021 at 7:30 PM, let the record show. We are running a little bit behind, it is 7:41 and we will begin with a roll call. Mr. Almeida.
Here.
Is here, Ms. Fay.
Here.
Mr. Hawley.
Here.
Ms. Ilinski.
Here.
Mr. Jody.
Why is there?
Mr. Jody is here, I see him.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Mr. Mazzy.
Here.
Mr. Malillo.
Here.
Mr. Iroquez.
Here.
Suddenly sweating.
Mr. Marshawn, we're gonna mark as absent unless anybody saw him, did anybody see Mr. Marshawn? I did not, Mr. Nijame, absent. So we have nine regular meeting members and one alternate. The public participation instructions started on page two of the agenda. The Zoom instructions are as follows. This is a virtual Zoom meeting, the meeting of the Danbury zoning commission. Is being held on Zoom as a virtual meeting, even though this meeting is a virtual meeting. Members of the public and interested parties continue to have the opportunity to participate. In the meeting in a couple of different ways, you could participate via Zoom and you can see the audio and the video. Or you can call in by phone and participate via audio only. Please be aware that we may have to mute your microphone or telephone to avoid an echo or some other background noise. This is also being streamed live via YouTube. Instructions on how to participate in the meeting appear on the city of Danbury website. And all of the documents and materials that apply to the matters to be discussed during this meeting, including the agenda. Are also available on the city of Danbury website, as always. If you have any questions, please contact the city of Danbury planning and zoning department. As a reminder, the entire meeting will be posted on and can be seen on the city of Danbury website. We will follow the posted agenda as per standard practice. If prior to the meeting, any questions or comments on agenda items were submitted via email to Sharon Colletro. Those comments will be read during the appropriate portion of the meeting. Finally, please remember that technology glitches sometimes do occur, please be patient if that happens. Okay. What I'm gonna do now is, I'm going to read the legal notice. It is a notice of commission meeting cancellation continuation of public hearing. The special meeting of November 18th, 2021 is canceled due to potential issues regarding the adequacy of notice. Of adjournment of the November 16th, 2021 special meeting. The public hearing for the petition of three Lake Avenue extension to amend. Sections 2B, 5B, 2B 19 and 5B, 5G of the zoning regulations. Amendments to existing definitions defining a new use transitional shelter for the homeless. And adding this new use as a special exception to the CA 80 zone. Will be continued until the regular meeting of the zoning commission to be held on the Zoom platform on Tuesday. November 23rd, 2021 at 7:30 PM, the meeting agenda to be posted. Will include instructions on how to access this new meeting. And application materials and view of the meeting in real time on YouTube. Theodore J. Headed, Junior Chairman, post on the city website. And in the town clerk's office on November 8th, 2021, published in the news times on November 20th, 2021. Purchase order 2022174. And I will set that aside. The next regular meeting is scheduled for December 14th. 2021, if Mr. Malillo can. Share his screen, if we're gonna get a screen shared to him, he could put up the flag. And if we could all please join Mr. Malillo in the pledge of allegiance.
I'm sorry, I had to unmute and I couldn't see the screen.
All right.
Here we go, round two.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance.
Flag of the United States of America and to the republic. One nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Thank you very much. Now let's go to the acceptance of minutes, we have two sets of minutes this evening, November 9th, 2021 and November 16th, 2021. Let's deal with them separately. Regarding the November 9th, 2021 minutes, commission members, what's your pleasure? Mr. Malillo, did you have any?
I do for the November 16th, but I'm also.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to accept the November 9th minutes as presented by the secretary.
As presented, thank you very much, commission members, is a motion to accept the November 9th. At 2021 minutes as accepted, is there a second, second by Mr. Mazzy, any discussion? All those who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
Aye.
For the record, there's no opposition, that passes unanimously. Regarding the November 16th, 2021 minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I.
Mr. Malillo.
I talked with the secretary earlier this afternoon. There were a couple minor clarifications that need to be made in the minutes. Under one, under one speaker from the opposition. Who had referenced Dorothy Day, I'd asked that it was clarified that he was, that that individual was referencing Dorothy Day in his comments. And then I also had with attorney Marcus, I had requested. That she added an apostrophe S and referring to the petition, the petition. That was presented because it was, it was, it was the opposition's petition, I asked that it be reflected as being possessive. So I would like to make a motion to accept the minutes with those two amendments.
Thank you, Mr. Malillo, is there a second commission members, second by Mr. Jody, any discussion? All those who favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed. For the record, there's no opposition, these minutes have been approved unanimously as well. There is no public hearing this evening. However, there is a continuation of a public hearing. And before I read that in, let me review for everyone and discuss the procedure for this evening. We will begin. With me reading this in, the paragraph that we have been reading in all along. We'll begin with the applicant, their representative attorney Hollister. They will have as much time as they want. Commenting and rebutting already discussed and presented exhibits, letters, data, etc. From all previous zoning commission meetings while not adding anything new. They can include letters and materials pertaining to anything already discussed previously, but not anything new. When they are finished commenting and rebutting, the commission members may ask questions of the applicant and the representative attorney Hollister. When there are no more questions, I will ask Ms. Colletro. If she has any further comments. Commission members may ask Ms. Colletro questions on anything already discussed previously. That will not admit or ask for anything new. After that, I will seek a motion to close. After the motion to close is made, seconded and successfully closed, I will then seek another motion. I will ask the commission for someone to make a motion to move this just closed petition to old business. Specifically for discussion and consensus. I asked the staff, specifically the planning director Ms. Colletro. To prepare two sample draft resolutions. A positive and a negative draft resolution, which she has done. By the way, I have not seen them and I do not know their content. When this commission has finished its discussion. We should have a consensus in which we will ask Ms. Colletro to do a screen share. Of the sample draft resolution that she has prepared according to our positive or negative consensus. We will discuss that sample draft resolution. I use the word sample because that is just what it is, it's a sample. We will discuss it, add, subtract, modify, alter, etc., any way we deem necessary. At any point, a commissioner can make a motion on that resolution. Either as it existed for Ms. Colletro or in a new modified state. That will include reasons added to the motion. If it is a motion to approve the petition with reasons and it passes with a simple majority, the petition is approved. If it is a motion to deny the petition with reasons and it passes with a simple majority, the petition is denied. Motion's made either way under each circumstance that do not survive and die on the floor. Become a little bit of a complicated matter and we have corporation counsel here for guidance. Finally, for the record, we do have a plan B. We can have a special meeting for November 29th, 2021 if necessary. But the night is young, we have plenty of time tonight. So it cannot be said that this commission did not have enough time to consider, discuss and vote. So. That said, let me move to the petition of Three Lake Avenue Extension LLC. To amend sections 2B, 5B, 2B 19, 19 is in parentheses. And 5B, 5G of the zoning regulations. Amendments to existing definitions defining a new use transitional shelter for the homeless. And adding this new use as a special exception used to the CA 80 zone. So at this time, everyone, if you would, please mute your mics and I would like to call upon attorney Hollister. And attorney Hollister, please, you can take as much time as you'd like and you have the floor.
Thank you, let me first check and make sure everyone can see and hear me.
We got you, yes we do, thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, good evening, I'm attorney.
Good evening.
Hollis, I'm attorney Tim Hollister with the firm of Hinkley Allen and Snyder in Hartford. Representing applicant Three Lake Avenue Extension LLC and its affiliate Pacific House. I'm prepared now to provide the applicant's final rebuttal. As promised, I haven't timed this out exactly, but I expect to be less than 45 minutes. Maybe, maybe on the order of 35 to 45 at most. The rebuttal has been prepared by myself with help from Rafael Pagan. Executive Director of Pacific House. Jerome Roberts, the executive, associate executive director of Pacific House and manager. Of the facility at Three Lake Avenue Extension. Housing consultant Larry Klitch. And Department of Housing Steve Delelo, who is among other things, the coordinator. Of the coordinated access network, which is the statewide network that. Provides direction to the, and placement for the state's homeless shelter system. I also want to acknowledge assistance from, and thanks, Mr. Batello. Who has been very kind with his time and advice. Commissioners should have, or have access to the applicant's written materials, which are August 16th, November 2nd. November 8th and November 15th. Before I start, I guess I need to point out that one of my challenges tonight is that since our initial. Presentation on September 28th, and this is not a criticism, it's just a fact. The opposition speakers have had two cycles of comment and testimony. Including while we have been submitting written responses to questions and comments at the previous hearing. But, so my, my written materials that I would presented twice by the opposition. Before I've even had the chance to bring them up myself. And there have been a couple of instances where those materials were not correctly read into the record. So part of what I have to do tonight is to correct the record and I'll ask for your patience as I go through that task.
Absolutely, sir, absolutely.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, yes.
Just to preserve the record, I would like to just, for a clear, point of clarification. I'm asking is if attorney Hollister is referring to the fact that they may not have been accurately reflected. Through public testimony into the record, or is he recognizing that we failed to read them into the record?
No, 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 those who, opposition speakers did not accurately state what I wrote, that's all I was saying.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we preserve the record, that you were not doing a procedural. Claim that, that the record may not have been correctly submitted in, in verbal fashion.
I appreciate that clarification and I agree.
Thank you.
So, let me start with.
Thank you very much.
Okay, let me start with a reminder that I said two meetings ago, but it bears repeating. The application before the commission tonight is for a zoning regulation amendment. Now, it's, this is an unusual application in that it seeks to. Establish zoning compliance for a use that has already been established physically. For emergency purposes under the governor's pandemic orders before they expire. In any event, if this application is approved. It, the regulation would authorize, that's the key word, the authorize the applicant. To make a special exception and site plan application for Three Lake Avenue Extension. Which is to say, and maybe this is mostly for members of the public. The commission is not being asked tonight to approve the shelter. Not, a special permit application would go to the planning commission. The planning commission and town staff would, would then have the ability to impose strict conditions on the operation of the use. And attorney Casa Grande, I believe, reinforced that and confirmed that understanding at the last hearing. Pacific House would welcome. A collaborative, community-wide process and discussion to make sure. That the conditions of approval of the operation would include safety and security at the facility and the properties around. Stated differently, if this commission, the zoning commission can envision. A special permit, a set of special permit conditions. That would make the operation of this facility acceptable to the commission, the staff. The city, the police and the neighbors. Then it should approve this application and allow the process to go to the next stage. If they, if you remember nothing else of what I'm saying tonight, I hope you will keep that top of mind as, as we go through. And it's important to remember, special permits generally are discretionary procedures. So the planning commission will have lots of discretion to shape the discussion, to shape the conditions, shape the approval. This is not passing on something that would be in any way a rubber stamp at the planning commission level. Okay, end of reminder. Now, I am a big fan of a book that some of you may know called Getting to Yes. It's about how understandings and agreements can be reached in contentious situations. One of the points of the book is to start by proposing points that hopefully everyone can agree on, so that's where I'm gonna start. So first, for its part, the applicant, and we acknowledge. The perception among the neighbors that there has been an increase. In disruptive conduct in the Mill Ridge area over the past 18 months, we've heard testimony about that. We acknowledge that perception. We also accept that our opponent, those who are opposed to this application are concerned in good faith. About safety and security in the neighborhood, about families and children, we accept all of that. But, the applicant asks for additional agreement, if you would think of this as meeting us halfway. On the following points, the first is that since March of 2020, the city of Danbury. Has been in emergency response mode as part of the statewide, nationwide. Worldwide response to the pandemic. Moving most of the city's homeless. To the Super 8 motel and hiring Pacific House to replace city shelter volunteers. Has been part of that response. Second, think about the consequences of the pandemic, not just in Danbury, but regionally and nationally. They have included loss of jobs, loss of income, loss of housing, illness, death. And increases in panhandling, much of it occurring where cars stop. At highway ramps, stoplights and parking lots, this is not a Danbury problem. This is not a Mill Ridge problem, this is a statewide and a national problem. And I would just cite one source that I went, found that verified this was an article from the Hartford Kern in October of 2020. Entitled, "As Panhandling Grows, Connecticut Towns Look for Answers," written by Don Stakem and referencing Danbury as one of those towns. Third thing we ask for as a point of agreement is that the conversion. Of Three Lake Avenue Extension from a Super 8 to a shelter did not cause these conditions. It has been part of the emergency response to them. We asked, the applicant asked that everyone involved, keep in mind the task and the goal here. We accept. That citizens of Danbury and the applicant and the city, that you all care about the health and safety of those who, for whatever reason. Are homeless and you want to provide shelter and transition back to being housed. What we are discussing here tonight, important to keep this, to keep this in mind. What we're discussing here is what is the right balance to achieve that shared goal? That what is the right balance, another thing to keep in mind. Next, I'm gonna ask the commission and everyone else to accept that Pacific House. Is an established, capable, reputable organization with a track record of over 30 years in the city of Stanford. In Stanford, Pacific House has number one stabilized. The neighborhood where its shelter is located as evidenced in part by the luxury housing that was built across the street. After the shelter was established and they've also. Helped to the homeless to transition to permanent housing and maybe most important, over time, they have reduced. The homeless population in Stanford and in the region. And the proof of all of this is the very large batch of support letters from Stanford officials. And Stanford-based agencies eyewitnesses to what Pacific House has been doing for 30 years. And I would note that most of those support letters, just the way the schedule worked, were read into the record at about 1:00 AM, two, two meetings ago. And if you, for whatever reason, were not listening at that time, please go back and look at those letters if you have any doubt. Conversely, the suggestions that have been made that Pacific House is not competent or it's secretive. Or it is, some people said it is making this application so its owners can get a financial windfall. That is ridiculous, this is a nonprofit organization with public and financial disclosure requirements, among the other, many other requirements. Next, I'm gonna ask you that to accept that Pacific House's goals are to operate this facility. Just as they have in Stanford, to stabilize the neighborhood around Three Lake Avenue Extension and make sure its operation. Does not disrupt or disturb the neighborhood, not, not just out of caring for the neighborhood. But because it's the right thing to do and they will, they have a track record of doing that in Stanford. Now, I'm gonna digress for a moment, a little aside, this application is not about me. Or not about my role, but I'm gonna ask you to accept. That if I did not truly believe as an attorney. That this applicant and this application will benefit the city of Danbury, I wouldn't be sitting here. I didn't go looking for this work at my advanced age, I didn't need to stay up way past my bedtime. But I thought, and I think now, that this application was and is. A sound response to an emergency situation. And I also welcome the opportunity here to work with the city's planning department and legal staff. Which are widely recognized as among the best in the state, so that's why I took this role on and I want you to understand that. I'm gonna ask the commission to accept that the era of congregate or so-called dormitory style shelters is over. Even if or when COVID subsides, so-called single room occupancy is the new national official model for sheltering the homeless. The federal department of housing and urban development is converting hotels to shelters nationwide. Nationwide and is providing federal funds for the purpose, for the purchase of hotels for just that purpose. Next, I'm gonna shift a little bit in the emphasis, I'm gonna ask the commission to not do a couple of things. Please don't accept the narrative of those who blame every unwelcome behavior in this neighborhood. On the shelter and its residents and its program, there's simply no evidence to support that. Stand also that there are some homeless who refuse to be sheltered or to be helped. Please don't, don't accept representation that every individual shown in a photo. Doing nothing other than standing in a parking lot as a shelter resident.
Excuse me, attorney Hollister, please, there you go, I just saw a mic that needed to be muted, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, don't accept that every representation of someone in a parking lot. Doing nothing but standing there is a shelter resident engaged in disruptive conduct. There is no photo in the record of this hearing that shows illegal activity on Three Lake Avenue. Next, I would ask you to don't accept claims without evidence of cause and effect. Now, I'm gonna be a little bit snarky here just to make a point. Suppose I would ask you this question, have you ever noticed? That since the Super 8 motel became a shelter, there have been more wildfires in the western United States? Well, okay, just because things happen in the same timeframe. Or even in geographic proximity, doesn't mean that one caused the other, so ask yourself, where's the evidence of cause and effect? We ask the commission to not agree with those who say the answer is somewhere else without an identified alternative. To not accept those who say, well, let's work together as the solution without explaining more about what they propose. Please don't accept the claims that the governor's orders are going to be extended in February. So Danbury can just take its time with this issue. Don't accept those whose answer here is that every town. Surrounding Danbury should open its own shelter for its own residents and build more affordable housing. The so-called fair share affordable housing approach has been proposed in the legislature. Just about every year for 30, 40 years and rejected at the state level for better or worse. But as to shelters, a shelter in every town and Department of Housing is fully on board with this. A shelter in every town would just be financially and administratively impossible. Shelters are regional facilities and the administration of the coordinated access network depends on that. And finally, because some people suggested it, I will say, don't expect the applicant to withdraw this application. That would frankly be an insult to the time and effort that many people. Now, on this hearing now have put into this process, so we're not going to do that. Okay, now I'm gonna segue to correcting some of the misstatements unfortunately that have worked their way into the record. The first thing is the, what I would call the Pacific House timeline, we were accused last time of fudging the timeline, so I'm gonna spell it out one more time. In the spring of 2020, we had the pandemic, the city shelters closed. The state and the city started moving homeless people to the Super 8. Pacific House in Stanford was asked to assist. With managing the population and by the way, doing, during a public health emergency and without disrupting the hotel. That was, that was quite a challenge, so Pacific House started acting as an advisor. But initially, for several months, the employees were city staff. Doing a heroic job, but mostly part-time and Pacific House had to work within the city's personnel rules. And this continued until April. Of 2021, when Three Lake Avenue Extension purchased the property with state money. From April to August of 2021, this year, it was a period of transition from city staff. To Pacific House operation and control, all of which means, and I said this in the first hearing. So when this hearing started, Pacific House had only been in control of the facility for about a month. So it is also correct to say that Pacific House has been involved from day one. They have only been in control in recent weeks, so that's an important distinction. Okay, we've heard lots of references to CDBG money, Community Development Block Grant money. Mr. Nolan claimed last time, $6.1 million is quote, floating out there somewhere, unquote. Implying, let's deny this application and use that money, well, that, that's just not correct. And I verified this with the Department of Housing. In 2020, the state of Connecticut received an $11 million grant from the federal government. Designated specifically for COVID response. It was under the rubric of CDBG money, but it was not for general CDBG purposes. And this was the allocation to the entire state of Connecticut, not just Danbury. Danbury City Council voted to permit the city to apply for up to, up to the entire state allocation. Why not, see if you, see how much you could get. From August of 2020 until January of 2021. Department of Housing and the city worked together on an application for funds. There were many obstacles and concerns during that time, including local zoning. Ultimately, as part of a nationwide effort to streamline the distribution of the money. HUD, federal HUD granted a waiver to allow the Connecticut Department of Housing. To provide funds directly to Pacific House or its subsidiary. to provide funds directly to Pacific House or its subsidiary Three Lake Avenue Extension to buy the Super Eight property for four point eight million dollars. At some point, I guess somebody recognized that the governor's orders basically superseded local zoning, so the lack of zoning was not deemed to be an obstacle. But the rest of the eleven million dollars was spent elsewhere on COVID response. So there is no six point one million remaining. The eleven million was never allocated just to Danbury and the money was used was was specified for COVID response, such as the hotel purchase. Okay, next topic, not a mega shelter. Pre-pandemic, I am informed that Danbury had two shelters and two overflow facilities with an average night total population of about fifty to sixty. The proposed regulation amendment would allow up to eighty-six total total emergency beds and supportive units, not eighty-six of each, eighty-six total in those two categories with no more than forty-eight being supportive units and the rest being emergency beds in the range of about forty. The average nighttime population at the Three Lake Avenue Extension in recent weeks has been about fifty to sixty. The winter month expectation is sixty to seventy, perhaps in an extreme cold weather protocol, perhaps eighty. But the point is, the current and projected emergency bed population is not and will not be substantially different than what was in the shelters in the city of Danbury before the pandemic. And that is a that is a fact that certainly I think has gotten lost in the discussion. And by the way, the advantage of having it at the Three Lake Avenue Extension is that the that the homeless are in one, the the population is consolidated in one building. They have a facility that's available twenty-four seven. They're not pushed out onto the street during the daytime. And of course, you have the supportive services are very more robust, I think, than than previously. So as to the months ahead, and this is also very important to understand. At present, right now, today, November twenty-third, only the emergency beds are open. The supportive units, which will be so-called permanent housing with income qualifications and one-year leases are on hold pending this zoning process. So the facility at the moment is only emergency shelter beds. Once those supportive units come online after a phased floor-by-floor renovation, that Pacific House and the Department of Housing have scoped out and lined up. The maximum occupancy will be the emergency beds plus the supportive units, many of which in both categories are single individuals. So the net population is not going to be anywhere near the listed act ma- maximum occupancy of one seventy-two. And in fact, it's important to understand the one seventy-two number that has been thrown around, that is the fire department's maximum population limit based on the state fire code and the square footage of the building. That is, there, I believe, two or three speakers said one hundred and seventy-two or one hundred and seventy-four beds. That is not what is proposed. Nothing close to that is proposed. And please let's just put that that error aside because it's it's getting in the way of understanding what's going on here. Police statistics from the police department. The facts are police calls to Three Lake Avenue Extension have been infrequent over averaging ten to fifteen a month, and this has not changed since approximately two thousand and ten. That was demonstrated by Attorney Mizuko back at the ZBA hearing in May. It has not changed during the pandemic. The police chief has said several times that the shelter today is not overtaxing the department. In the October fourth memo from the police department, there was reference to sixty calls to the Mill Ridge area in a specified timeframe, I believe, three to four months, one, one shelter-related call. Another statistic from that batch of data, there were in August of twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, just three months ago, there was a spike. Summer months, nineteen calls. But in September of twenty twenty-one, the first month that Pacific House was in control, four calls in the entire month, four, not mentioned by our opponents. On top of that, you have the police department materials, October fourth, talking about Mill Ridge Road, Mill Ridge Drive, School Ridge Road, High Ridge Road. And the memo says, quote, historically, the call volume on these streets, not Lake Avenue, these streets has been significant. And that is consistent with the letter from retired Officer Zelinski, which was read into the record by retired officer Michael, quote, to place a shelter in such close proximity to a liquor store and an area historically known for drug activity, unquote, seems counterproductive. So there there is a history here and it doesn't point a finger at the shelter. There was a claim on the order of five resident deaths. There has been one death since Pacific House has been involved with the building. That was in January of twenty twenty-one. It was while the building was still operating as a hotel and it occurred in a hotel room. There's also been discussion of the timing of the hotel sale and publicity. The Department of Housing and the city and the hotel owner worked to keep the deal confidential in twenty twenty-one for the reasons that we explained in our November second materials. Somehow the news was leaked. We do agree with that. The source was not identified, but the goal was confidentiality. And it has allowed by the Freedom of Information Act that that the terms of the deal were not made public by those involved in the process. Okay, moving on, Councilman Rotello asked, why not the RH three or CBD zones where shelters are allowed? And that there are two reasons for that. First is the super eight is in a CA eighty zone. This is an application to use an existing building and convert it to a new model of a transitional shelter. So the the building just isn't in the RH three zone or the CBD zone, and that was our starting point. But on top of that, the RH three and CBD zones only allow a traditional shelter, not the type of transitional shelter that we're talking about here. So even if we wanted to establish a similar type facility in those zones, we would have to amend the regulations. So we just didn't think that that was appropriate. We have the building and we have the process and this is where we ended up. Okay, opponents have consistently advocated that Danbury only assists homeless people who are, quote, from Danbury, unquote. Well, by definition, homeless people do not have a current residence address. But this said, the majority of those who are currently at the Three Lake Avenue Extension have given the city of Danbury as their most recent address. But otherwise, the facility, like pretty much all homeless shelters, is a regional facility. And it that is a result of its participation in the coordinated access network. Limiting the facility to what you might try to call Danbury residents is simply not realistic. There have been discussions about security. There, as we pointed out in our November second materials, there are sixteen security cameras at the facility. They are in operation twenty-four seven. The staff, from the time that they took full control at least, have conducted checks of the property, the perimeter and nearby and nearby locations for known shelter residents. They do not stop at the property line, as was claimed. They do not stop at the property line. And this is the one piece of new and updated information. As of November eighteenth, five days ago, Pacific House has a contract with a professional security company called National Security. And so, starting last week, there is a patrol car on site from four PM to ten PM, patrolling the parking lot and the perimeter of the property. So that is in operation right now, right now. The there was a question, does the facility serve veterans? Yes, it serves veterans. I don't have a number for you, but certainly veterans are are part of the eligible population. There was a question about the sex offender registry. There is currently no one on the registry who is located at the shelter. The authorization for the shelter includes up to three people who may be on the registry, but note that the registry has different classifications. And one of the hard and fast rules is no person who has ever been classified as a pedophile on the registry is allowed at any time. So there was a claim also that that someone on the registry was in the facility and was moved out during the course of this hearing, basically for appearance's sake, that is, that is false. And we have no idea where that information came from, but it is false. We've discussed supportive units and emergency beds qualifying as so-called affordable housing units under general statutes eight thirty G. They are being treated by the city and the Department of Housing as what's called assisted housing, meaning housing that is provided with some form of state governmental, financial governmental assistance. Their status has been confirmed by the city staff with the Department of Housing. Danbury will get so-called permanent exemption points on the Department of Housing's ten percent list, permanent exemption from eight thirty G. That no matter how you slice it, that is a very significant benefit to the city of Danbury, and I think you should think twice about turning your turning your back on that benefit, which your staff has very capably arranged and confirmed with the state. Support letters. At the last hearing, an opponent presented a pie chart graphic account. Don't know the accuracy of the count, but she presented a count of letters in favor and opposed. I would simply respond by saying numbers don't count, content counts. And more importantly, zoning is not a popular vote. It is not what's called a plebiscite or popularity contest. Zoning by referendum is not allowed, thank goodness, in the state of Connecticut. If someone has a right to use a property in a particular way, it doesn't matter if one hundred percent of the town is opposed to that application. If it's lawful, excuse me, Mr. Berland, could I? Mr. Berland, I'm going to ask you to please stop. It's being very distracting. That that is called a property right that you get. If you have a right, it doesn't matter if there are opponents and you can proceed. There's been reference to a petition with fifteen hundred names. I encourage you to look at that petition. The staff has a copy if it's not online. It is only online, no signatures, and so we, there's no statement of the position supported. So it's really not clear what people were told or not told about what they were agreeing to. But I would also point out that there are several hundred people identified only as Danbury, but several hundred people also with addresses, not just around the country, but around the world. Modesto, California, Charlotte, North Carolina, Elizabeth Town, Kentucky, Little Rock, Arkansas, and many other places that no matter how you slice it are not near Danbury. Spot zoning. Let's put this to rest. I believe the Corporation Council reached an independent conclusion agreeing with our memo. The short answer is, this is a spot of land. But as the planning department's memo of September ninth shows, what is being proposed here in the CA eighty zone is consistent with other permitted and specially permitted uses in that zone. End of story. That the legal analysis ends there. This is not spot zoning. I need to comment on a little bit of hypocrisy regarding the owner of the Dunkin' Donuts and the businesses at two four six Mill Ridge Avenue. There was a claim that the conversion to a shelter put the Dunkin' Donuts, not the kiosk, but the store, out of business. Well, the evidence appears to be that that Dunkin' Donuts closed because it didn't have a drive-through window. The kiosk store across the street does. But meanwhile, and we provided you a copy of this in our November fifteenth of materials at tab three, in May of twenty twenty-one, right after the the Super Eight property was sold to Three Lake Avenue Extension LLC with the shelter operating, the owner of that property, which I believe is is six Mill Ridge Avenue, asked the city or retained from the city permission to convert the Dunkin' Donuts to a vape shop. So an adult store, a liquor store, and a vape vape shop. A trifecta for the kids in the neighborhood. No. The that was not mentioned by the owner's representative last time. And it's just important to you understand that the the claim that the other businesses were put out by the shelter is contradicted by the business owner's own conduct. So I'm going to conclude now with three, three points. First, I want you all, commission members, to go back to the beginning. Recall that you were voting on a proposed regulation amendment, which is a tab three of the applicant's August sixteenth, twenty twenty-one application package with the addition, which was discussed briefly last time, of that subparagraph fourteen, which clarifies that there can only be one principal use of the property. And I don't know that there's any controversy about that. That's a good addition that was proposed several meetings ago. I will say that the regulation has been carefully drafted. We certainly have been debating the consequence and the wisdom of the regulation. But I don't, I haven't heard anybody say that the regulation itself has not been carefully or appropriately drafted. Second, commissioners, I ask you to ask yourself, what is the alternative to this application? What will be the consequence of denying this application? If there is no viable alternative, and we certainly, the applicant has not heard one, then at least let the process move to the next stage. Special exception site plan application and a cooperative collaborative formulation of strict conditions on the operation, including safety, security, monitoring, reporting, and transparency. Third, and finally, before you vote, I'm going to urge each of the commission members to go back and review the city planning staff's September ninth, twenty twenty-one memo. It laid out directly the facts, the law, the policy reasons, and the benefits to the city of this application. If the commission is going to vote to deny this application, then basically you will be tearing up that memo and ignoring the city staff's thoughtful and documented analysis. We submit that that memo, more than anything else really presented in this hearing, including my remarks, points the way for the city of Danbury to respond to this situation and amply justifies the approval of this application. So I think I'm just about forty minutes, Mr. Chairman. I thank you for your time. I thank the commission for its unyielding and unending patience with this process. And just in case I don't get a chance to say it, the applicant team wishes everyone involved a safe holiday weekend. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Attorney Hollister. Commission members, as I mentioned before on the procedure, we are going to, at this time, question Attorney Hollister on anything since since the first meeting till tonight. So I will ask commission members, and I think I have them all on my screen here. So I'll look for hands or voices. Commission members, any questions of Attorney Hollister at this time?
Or the team.
Or the team. Absolutely. Commission members, any questions of Attorney Hollister or the team? He had mentioned the names before. I don't see any. Attorney Hollister, let me ask you quickly, what? And I know you don't want to think about this. What happens if this petition gets denied to the facility? What's your plan B?
We don't have one that I can articulate. I mean, you're right. We don't want to think about it. I mean, if you're asking me, does the Pacific House or the Department of Housing or city staff have a plan B that I'm aware of? The answer is no.
I guess what what happens to the facility?
Well, the the short-term answer is it can, it may, I guess, continue to operate under the governor's pandemic orders. When those orders expire, now slated for, I believe, mid-February, arguably, there would be a non-compliant zoning use. But, you know, now we'll be into a complicated legal situation that I just don't want to speculate on.
Sure, I understand. Thank you. Commission members, any questions? Commission members? I don't see any, so I'm going to ask one more time. Any questions, commission members? Any questions, commission members? Any questions, commission members? I don't see any. So let me move on now to Ms. Colletro. Does the staff have any comments, anything that you want to? You want to submit?
Hi, thank you, Sharon Colletro and the Planning Director for the record. I don't have any additional comments.
Thank you very much. Commission members, anything of Ms. Colletro at this time? Mr. Mallo, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Colletro, I just wanted to refresh our minds for a second. Reflecting back to a couple of comments made by Attorney Marcus many hours ago. I don't remember exactly when. But in your staff report, you had given us some advice and you briefly talked about the site specific application of it. But then you did, that I believe, if I remember correctly, you noted that you were not comfortable, you couldn't really give legal advice. And so in your staff report, you actually encouraged us, if we needed legal advice, to seek that from Corporation Council. Is that correct? encouraged us, if we needed legal advice, to seek that from Corporation Council. Is that correct?
Uh as to the issue of spot zoning, I deferred to Corporation Council. That's correct.
Okay, so, cuz I was thinking, cuz uh I remember Attorney Marcus challenging um Corporation Council's ability to answer that question because he represented you. And I just wanted to get clarification that you had encouraged us to seek Corporation Council, so and therefore there probably should not have been any conflict cuz he was adhering to us with our legal, giving us sound legal advice, and it did not conflict with any attention to defend your report. Would that be correct?
Yes, I am not an attorney, so I left the legal uh analysis up to uh the Office of Corporation Council.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Calitro.
Thank you, Mr. Mallo. Commission members, any further questions of Ms. Calitro? Commission members, anything of Ms. Calitro? Commission members, anything of Ms. Calitro? One more time, commission members, anything of Ms. Calitro? Okay, I don't hear any, I don't see any. So I will ask the commission members. Feel free to open your mics if you'd like. I'd be looking for motions to close this public hearing.
Mr. Chairman.
I see Mr. Mallo's hand and I see his mic is unmuted. Go ahead, Mr. Mallo.
After what is many hours and might even be the longest uh public hearing in record for the city of Danbury Zoning Commission, definitely it's a couple of the latest nights in record, at least one of the latest nights in record. I would like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Commission members, there's a motion by Mr. Mallo to close a public hearing, and is there a second? I see Mr. Hawley's hand. Commission members, any discussion? Any discussion? Motion made to close public hearing with a second, not hearing any discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? I don't see or hear any opposition, so that motion to close a public hearing has been unanimously approved, so this public hearing is closed. Thank you, everyone.
Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Mallo.
At this time, I would like to make a motion to move this item um to item number one under Old Business for Discussion and Possible Action on tonight's agenda.
Discussion and consensus.
And possible action.
Thank you.
It's actually just under Old Business, cuz that's all it's labeled as on the agenda, so.
That is correct. Uh, commission, commission members, there's a motion move this to uh Old Business for Discussion, Consensus, Possible Action. Is there a second? A second by Mr. Kelly. Any discussion? All those in favor signify, I'm sorry, any discussion, any discussion, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed. So this is moved to number two under Old Business. So.
Item one under Old.
One.
I'm sorry, I'm look, I'm looking at a number two here, and I said number two. So ladies and gentlemen, we have a petition deceiving number one under Old Business. It's a petition of Three Lake Avenue Extension LLC to amend section two B, five B, two B nineteen, and five B, five G of zoning regulations, amendments to existing definitions defining a new use transitional shelter for the homeless and adding this new use as a special exception use to the C A eighty zone. The public hearing was closed on November twenty third, two thousand and twenty one at the seven thirty meeting, and it was moved to Old Business on November twenty third, two thousand and twenty one at the seven thirty meeting. Commission members.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Yes, yes, you can.
And I believe um Corporation Council might need, might need to address, uh just kind of weigh in on this one. In the past, we've waited for a motion to be made for discussion, but I believe Corporation Council has indicated that we actually can discuss prior to a motion being made. Am I correct?
Yeah, yes, Mr. Chair, through the chair, yes, Mr. Mallo.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Catherine Randy.
So I guess Attorney Catherine Randy is telling us that we are free to form a consensus and discuss and come close to a straw vote if see, we see fit. Uh once we arrive at a consensus, depending on what it is, as you recall, I have instructed uh Ms. Calitro to have a sample um positive recommendation and a sample negative recommendation, both with reasons. Um, I don't know if anybody wants to start any of the uh discussion to try and form a consensus, but I put a little something together, so if you would indulge me. Um, and it's, it's a, it's, it's a couple of minutes, but we have listened to hours and hours and hours, so. Well, the reading that I did, I think I'm entitled to go ahead and speak my own, uh my own mind at this point in time. Um and as a chairman, I very rarely speak during the discussion portions of our meetings, and I look to get as much discussion as possible first by the other commission members. I was chairman for eighteen years in the nineteen eighties and nineteen nineties, and I've never held a heavy gavel. And the same goes here even after thirty-five or forty years. However, tonight, before we go into.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, point of order. Are you uh for, are you um passing the virtual gavel to the vice chair since you are commenting?
Uh, chairman, is that allowed to comment?
I believe, if the, with the chair comments for the commission, if the chair is doing personal comments, I believe the chair has to actually pass the gavel of the chair to the vice chairman in case he needs to be ruled out of order.
Well, then why don't we do that, and I'll just go on with um, I'll pass the gavel to Mr. Johnny. There's nothing here really personal, but uh.
It's more procedural, but I wanted to note that you are commenting for yourself and not on behalf of the commission.
Absolutely fine. Mr. Jody, let me know if I'm out of order. However, tonight, before we go into discussion with the commission, I wanna offer up some of my thoughts uh before the other conversation begins. We have received hundreds and hundreds of documents. Last meeting, I think the count was seven hundred and forty-one pages. We have heard from dozens and dozens of people, including politicians, community leaders, religious leaders, special interest groups, and more from Danbury, from near Danbury, and from a long way from Danbury. We've heard from experts with reports and data. We've had requests to the staff and commission for information, and we requested that information from the necessary parties. We spent hours and hours and hours, one night until one forty-one in the morning, and another meeting adjourned at two fourteen in the morning, which is, Mr. Mallo, by the way, a new record. It broke my old record from the nineteen eighties. But we had good, solid conversation on whether or not there should be a homeless shelter at Three Lake Avenue Extension. Out of the hours and hours and hours meeting on whether or not there should be a homeless shelter at Three Lake Avenue Extension in Danbury, in my opinion, unfortunately, we only spent about six minutes on the actual petition. This petition before the zoning commission is whether or not a homeless shelter should be allowed at Three Lake Avenue Extension and three other properties on Old Ridgeberry Road, the Crown Plaza property, the One Reserve LLC property, and the third other piece of property is a piece of property that's owned by the state of Connecticut. Let me further state, the petition is dated August sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Tab one on the August sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one letter from Attorney Hollister to Chairman Haddad, page two, paragraph three. The locational limits are stated so that the specific property at Three Lake Avenue Extension will qualify. The text of the proposed regulation is at tab three of this application package. If the amendment is adopted, a special exception application for Three Lake Avenue Extension will follow. And B, tab three, five B, five G two, the site shall abut a ramp of Interstate eighty-four. The staff report's dated September ninth, two thousand and twenty-one. Three weeks later, page three, paragraph one, one site would be Three Lake Avenue Extension. The second site would be on Old Ridgeberry Road, Crown Plaza. The third site is a lot in phase three within a P N D owned by One Reserve LLC. And there is also another piece of land that the state of Connecticut owns that abuts the ramp of Interstate eighty-four. At the September twenty-eighth meeting, uh zoning commission meeting, at approximately the one hour and seventeen minute mark, the petitioner stated that the petition is intended to be site-specific to Three Lake Avenue Extension. At that same September twenty-eighth meeting, at approximately the two hour and eight minute mark, Commissioner Mallo questioned Attorney Hollister regarding the other properties identified in the staff report as being qualified should the petition be approved. It was then that the commission requested an opinion from Corporation Council, which we did get. In October twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-one email for myself to Ms. Calitro, I wrote, although I have requested letter from the Corporation Council regarding the discrepancy of opinions between the staff and petitioner as it relates to possible site locations, in parentheses, site-specific or other locations, I expect to discuss this with the petitioner as well. And we did have that conversation. That conversation took place with me and Attorney Hollister at the November ninth uh, November ninth meeting. I asked Attorney Hollister to comment on the fact that the petition submitted is not site-specific to Three Lake Avenue Extension, and he said that he could. I took that to mean that he could make it site-specific to Three Lake Avenue Extension. Contained in the applicant's supplemental materials dated November second is a memo to the Corporation Council dated October fourteenth where summary bullet point one refers to the petition as intended to apply only to Three Lake Avenue Extension. At the November ninth meeting, I discussed again with Attorney Hollister that the staff report identified several other properties that would be included should this petition be passed. Before this whole thing began, Ms. Calitro's staff report dated September ninth identified other properties that would be part of this petition. At that time, the petitioner did nothing to address that issue. At the November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one zoning commission meeting, in response to the commission's concerns to the petition submitted not as originally intended or presented, the petitioner offered to amend the original amended amendment language in two different ways, one of which was specifically five B, five G two B to read the site shall abut a ramp from exit four of Interstate eighty-four. Adding from exit four to make it site-specific. At that same November sixteenth meeting, the commission decided that this last-minute proposal of a revision to the original amendment language was too substantial, and that the commission would continue on with the petition as originally submitted only with the amended language regarding signal, single use, which is not disputed and was accepted. It might be discussed later this evening that it could be our right to approve this petition tonight with the expectation that the petitioner or the staff revisit the approved language to revise that language to add exit four, modifying the language to read the site shall abut a ramp from exit four of Interstate eighty-four, making it specific only to Three Lake Avenue Extension. Let me discuss the risks in approving this petition with the promise of modifying the language to make it site-specific at a future date. I believe it is unwise for any commission to kick the can down the road and assume that another process or commission or board will do what we would like or what we would recommend. Also, let's say that if this petition is approved as presented, including the other parcels, should the opposition decide to appeal the decision, an argument that they spoke of regard regarding spot zoning may not apply because the approval is going to include several other parcels as opposed to just one site-specific parcel. Corporation Council referred to the other parcels as well in forming the opinion of spot zoning. So that when the language is amended to make the sites specific, to make it site-specific to only Three Lake Avenue Extension, the potential of spot zoning can't be addressed because the appeal period would have passed and the building would be operating. The city could be left with creating a spot zone. Further, should the petitioner submit a new petition to make Three Lake Avenue Extension site-specific, it would be a joke. It wouldn't matter whether or not it got approved. The facility would be operating and the horse would already be out of the barn. Also, to approve the petition as presented, including several other parcels, should not be discounted because of what might not make sense today might make sense at another point in time. As an example, last week, the controlling interest of One Reserve LLC, one of the properties mentioned, passed away. His net worth is estimated to be approximately one point six to two billion dollars, and he and his foundations have donated tens upon tens of millions of dollars to charity and community interests, much here in Danbury. If this petition is presented, even though not intended, is approved, the heirs to this property may do the same thing that the approved petition would allow, without the neighborhood even knowing about it, because of publicity of this petition centered exclusively on the Super Eight Motel as the only site-specific property in the petition. Another example could be that a new developer of the Crown Plaza at some point can do what the approved petition would allow. All of this without the immediate neighborhood of those parcels being able to voice their opinion, not even knowing that their chance to speak was at this public hearing, a time that has passed them by. I'm not here to please the opposition. I'm not here to please those in favor. I'm not here to please the applicant. I'm here to do what the city of eighty-three thousand people expect of me as an elected official to do, and that is to protect everyone's interests and practice good zoning. I think that this petition was presented, discussed, and represented differently as submitted and is deceiving by omission. The petitioner spoke only of Three Lake Avenue Extension while not addressing the other several parcels included in this petition. I would have preferred if we all spent this time and energy on a petition that was submitted exactly as intended, rather than this commission be faced with possibly approving something that can be much more expansive when not needed or necessary or even desired by the petitioner. Why would this commission approve more than what the petitioner needs or wants? I would imagine that a denial tonight would yield a new petition specifically to the petitioner's needs, which was what they thought they were presenting to us in this petition. I would ask the members of this commission to take this information into consideration during your discussion tonight. Those are the comments that I had, and I wanted to say it in the beginning before discussion, in case anybody wanted to touch on that, because it's like the expression, you had me at hello. I almost feel like everything that took place, all of the letters and all of the discussion, um, I didn't share in that, although I listened to every single word and it, you know, affected me deeply, because I believe that the petition is really flawed and it doesn't pertain to the site-specific um parcel of Three Lake Avenue Extension. So, Mr. Jody, I'll take that gavel back, and um we will now go on to have any further discussion, and I see. Uh, thank you, Mr. Jody, and I see Mr. Mallo. His hand is raised. So what I'd like to do is I'd like to hear from some commission members. We're gonna go around and, and discuss it and see how we end up. Mr. Mallo, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm gonna differ a little bit with you um on some of the comments you made. Uh may, may or may not surprise some, some individuals. I'm gonna be a little bit more gracious than you. Uh, I feel.
Mr. Kelly, Mr. Kelly, if you would, please just mute the mic. Everyone, if they would mute it. I'm sorry, Mr. Mallo, go ahead. Thank you.
That's okay. I'm a school teacher. I'm used to being interrupted, although I, it's not the most pleasant thing to happen. Um, okay, so uh I'm gonna be more gracious than you were. Uh I'm, I'm gonna note that I feel as though there was more than about either three or six minutes. I forget the exact number that you had mentioned um dedicated to this petition and all the, in all the hours of um public hearing. We did hear, I think, while we did, no question, we heard an awful lot of material that's probably not as relevant to this petition as it could have been or should have been. Um however, we did hear, I, I feel some considerable information of relevance, you know, regarding no, the, the change, the, the, the change of scope of shelters and things along those lines. Earlier today, um I did spend some time, uh I got out of school a little bit earlier this, early this afternoon, cuz we had to have our hot water heater replaced, and that gave me some time to sit on my couch and re, and review some materials. So um, so I did go back and I did reread uh Ms. Calitro's staff report. I did go back and I did reread um the petitioner's application, and um I can confirm that that some of the information that he reminded us this evening, I did come back on. Uh for example, um that this particular amendment before us, um and let me actually specify on that first. We are looking at a legislative action. We are not looking at a site-specific action, and I would almost um be afraid to look at a specific site um, specific uh amendment. And I'm not sure we could, uh and this is for, would be for future reference and definitely would need counsel to weigh on it if we had to. But um, I'm not sure we could um hear a petition that would be as site-specific as maybe the applicant intended for this one to be, and whether he intended it for, to be, and it wasn't. I actually think it was lucky for him that it wasn't, because it did um open this up to potentially some other aspects, other purviews. However, he did write in the amendment um some, some numbers. First off, you know, capping the total units um in a transitional shelter uh at eighty-six units, which would be one hundred and seventy-two individuals total. He also wrote in the amendment that there could be no more than forty-eight supportive units. So those, that would be um the, my understanding of the transitional housing unit. So that would be of those one hundred and seventy-two, no more than ninety-six individuals living in there would be living in a transitional housing. Uh, you know, looking to be moved to full-time housing, but not in an emergency shelter bed, leaving. but not in an emergency shelter bed, leaving no more than 38 units for an emergency shelter, which would max out at 76, um, individuals. So we would be looking at a shelter for 76 individuals, not 172 individuals on an emergency shelter basis. And that's, and that is specifically how this amendment is worded. And it is just that, it is a legislative amendment. This is not, again, about a specific site location. You know, this is a special exception, the amendment is to make it a special exception use, which would mandate a public hearing. So the public would have an opportunity if they were concerned about a specific site and have that public hearing in front of the planning commission with a specific site plan, with a specific plan of attack, plan of action and, um, and, and knowledge as to how everything would operate. We're not as familiar with that. We look legislatively, we don't look individually site plan specific. And, you know, we, 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 we do that with the reserve, but when we do, we always, we always comment, this is unique, special. And, and sometimes we need extra explanations for that because we don't do that on a regular basis. And so, again, we are not looking at a specific site location. We are looking at how this amendment would impact the entire zone. One of the things I did take out of all the opposition comments was the way the neighborhoods feel. And currently, according to the staff report and testimony, shelters are only allowed in the CBD zone and the RH3 zone. The RH3 is a residential zone. I have to question right now whether it's wise to locate a shelter in a residential zone, whether it's wise to locate a homeless shelter in a residential neighborhood. So that would leave the CBD zone, industrial zones or commercial zones where shelters could be. The CA80 is a commercial zone. I think if we were to talk about putting shelters in the IG, in the IG80 zone, the one of the, the heaviest industrial zone or the IL40 zone. I think people, they may say, what are you doing putting the homeless over in these factories over, you know? And qual, I think we have quality life issues and stuff along throwing at us that way. So I have to, so I have to, so that again steers me back to maybe commercial zones are the appropriate zone to locate these in. Uh, I happen to believe that any type of a facility that's going to help people who need assistance, um, should be located on the bus route because that could be their viable source of transportation to and from work, to and from doctor's offices, to and from the grocery stores and other shopping venues. Most commercial zones are on the, the bus route, the, the city bus route. You know, while our residential zones aren't as, as accessible to the city bus route as some of the commercial zones are. So, so that would lead me to say, well, again, perhaps a commercial zone is doable for this. Uh, the CBD zone would make sense for the old shelter format where you had beds and you sent them out in the morning and say, goodbye, maybe we'll see you tonight. Maybe we won't see you tonight, but you can't stay. You have to go someplace. I don't care how cold it is, but you cannot stay here. Um, that's not the case for this. The, the amendment specifically states that for this use, it's a transitional shelter, must include um, the supportive services. So you can't just have that emergency shelter in a commercial zone that's going to kick the, kick the, um, people who are staying there for 30 days or, you know, or one night, um, out on the street and say, maybe we'll see you later. They, 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 they have to provide the supportive services, which, um, is being made so clear is helpful in helping people, um, back on their feet and get over addictions and get over, um, just some job, job training aspects and maybe, um, get jobs and, and possibly, you know, hold down some housing and stuff on those side. But those services are vital and they're going to be part of the unit, which means you're going to need a little bit of a larger facility. Again, which makes me think perhaps a commercial zone is more conducive because it's, again, a little bit of a larger facility. You don't need to put it down in the city central district where there's doctor's offices, other, other services accessible by walking down the street because you don't need to walk down the street for this type of a use. You walk down the hallway or you walk up a flight of stairs. Um, again, so it's in the use. So, um, so with that, uh, you know, I really think that, you know, it, it is in our legislative purview. You know, I'm glad we don't have to, you know, say, is Three Lake Avenue the exact location that's needed, but I do have to think that, um, the CA80 zone might be an appropriate zone to locate this type of a use in. And I would leave it up to the planning commission with a site specific plan, a site specific application to actually make a determination regarding the exact site that, um, this use should, should take place in. And with that, I will yield the floor.
Well, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Malillo. I forgot to ask commission members, any questions of my comments or Mr. Malillo's comments? I don't see any. Uh, Mr. Jodi, would you like to go next? I see your hand up.
Yeah, uh, just a comment with, uh, Mr. Malillo. I agree that, um, uh, the commercial zone can be, uh, you know, a good use for, um, uh, people staying there for the facilities, for the buses, uh, shopping and so forth. But the issue here is, is it this facility? Is it, or, or not? But I, I, I'm not pushing away the, the idea how, um, the commercial space could work. You know, there was many comments, many discussions, uh, people speaking in favor, people speaking against. You know, but in my opinion, this application started in the wrong way. I think it hit the, the opposition, you know, right in the face, like, um, all of a sudden, here it is, they're already in there, they're not applying. So I think the application, um, and the applicant went about this in the wrong way. It's very hard to, um, not hear the public. Uh, we as commission members try to do our best for the city and also for, uh, you know, for, uh, people in favor and against. And it's, it's, it's tough to, to, um, walk away and not hear the opposition that, um, if they're being heard in some of the comments. I don't doubt that if this was approved, um, things would get cleaned up and, um, you know, it would be a better place, but it started off on the wrong foot. And again, um, the opposition is speaking and it's hard to, uh, you know, um, not hear them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jodi. Commission members, any questions of, of, uh, Mr. Jodi? Mr. Almeida, I don't know if you have your hand raised as a question or you want to speak, but your hand is raised, so go ahead. Mr. Jodi, please mute your mic unless you're being questioned and Mr. Almeida, help yourself.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I actually had a question for Commissioner Mil- uh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Malillo, open up your mic.
Uh, I, I just had a, a question, um, if you could clarify. When you were talking about homeless shelters in residential, um, neighborhoods, were you referring to the traditional homeless shelter model or the new transitional use, um, transitional shelter that we're considering tonight?
So through you, Mr. Chairman, to Commissioner Almeida. Uh, the current zoning regulations only allow the traditional homeless shelter to be, um, to be opened in a residential neighborhood. If, if we were to approve this amendment tonight, um, the amendment does allow for those services to be included in a homeless shelter. So, uh, so therefore that, though you could offer those services in the shelter, but the existing definition in our zoning regs, um, for a homeless shelter is a traditional, you have so many beds, you leave at this time and you come back tonight when it gets dark. And if you're lucky, you can have another bed, which would, which would be, um, what would exist in a residential neighborhood? If, um, truthfully, potentially with or without this amendment. However, I would argue that this amendment could allow us to open the path to improve on this, those facilities in the residential neighborhoods. But without doing this amendment, I don't think we could at all. It would just be the traditional shelter we've, we've historically seen throughout Danbury.
In the residential neighborhoods that it's good for.
In the RH3 zone, which is a residential zone.
Because, uh, um, you know, for example, in Stanford, Pacific House has, does have homes in residential neighborhoods, but it's this type of use that we're considering tonight. So that's why I was asking you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Almeida. Commission members, I'd love to hear some more comments from some of our people. Ms. Ilinski, please, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You asked if we had any comments on your, um, what you had to say. And, um, I was just wondering if it's possible to, um, and I understand everything that you said and I'm getting the feeling that the, um, the way that the petition was presented was just not so ha with you. And I was wondering if it's possible for either Ms. Calitro or Corporation Council or even, um, Mr. Hollister to comment on everything you said? Or is that closed?
Yeah, um, I wouldn't even think we can go to, to staff for that. But I mean, ask, ask specifically what, uh, what is it that you're looking for? Are you looking for, I mean, if you, if you think about it, my, my complaint could have been, could have been addressed, but it was way too late in the process. That was what we decided the last time, um, on whether we should add and make it specific, where he had the issue of the security, then he had the issue of adding the word, uh, abutting exit four. And that came very late in the process and as a commission, we decided it was too substantial of a chance. It was too substantial of a change to make.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Malillo.
If I may, um, I would agree that Attorney Hollister, who's not a member of this commission and is representative of the applicant, would not be able to opine on the comments. However, I would, um, disagree and say that as staff, Corporation Council and Ms. Calitro, as our planning, the city planning director, could comment and explain anything that's been submitted on the record, but they cannot introduce anything new. So anything on the record, they could explain, they could elaborate on, they could translate for us. But they couldn't introduce anything new. And if, uh, and if you want to, I believe we can even get clarification from either Attorney Edwards or Attorney Tessa Grandy on that one.
I will. Attorney Tessa Grandy, Attorney Edwards, is there any problem with going to Ms. Calitro for having a direct question, uh, from Ms. Ilinski?
Through the chair, uh, the answer is, uh, you can accept comments from the staff and from Corporation Council as long as they do not involve the introduction of new evidence.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Malillo. Thank you, Attorney Tessa Grandy. Ms. Ilinski, if you could get, uh, specific as you can, um, when you direct, uh, when you ask a question of Ms. Ms. Calitro so she can, uh, uh, hone in on that.
Well, I guess, um, one of the things was, uh, regarding the Crown Plaza and the other properties, it seems to have gotten lost somewhere. And I was just wondering what the staff was thinking about when this, when the chairman had that mentioned those.
Ms. Calitro, if you would, please.
Sure. So, uh, again, as I noted in the staff report, um, when I, when I reviewed the petition, I looked at all the, um, additional use, uh, regulations that were being proposed and then looked at, um, where that use could, uh, be located based on those, um, the additional, uh, use regulations. And that's when I looked at the map of the area of the CA80 zone and I went to, you know, where do you abut an interstate ramp? Um, and I think I said this on the record, so, um, uh, early on, you know, I looked at what lots were adjacent to the ramps and, and could they meet those additional use regulations? Um, and then I pointed those out to you in my staff report. I also noted that there was an existing structure on the, um, lot of the Crown Plaza. Um, and hence, uh, my comment relative to having only one use because that, that structure, um, was occupied by a very large hotel. And, and then the applicant made the amendment to the, the regulations that, um, there would only be allowed one use, which is the amendment that you accepted. The other lot was actually, um, again, and this is all in the record, in the PND zone, but that specific, uh, there is language in the PND zone about lots that are kind of on the periphery and that they would be allowed to have, um, or be occupied by the same uses that are in the CA80 zone. And there's some, um, uh, question and, um, whether or not, you know, that, I, I think it does, but whether it abuts the ramp, it's a, it's an entry ramp from, um, the rest stop of 84. So would that qualify? And that's the one Reserve Road LLC property, that's the third site. The second site, and then the third site I, I brought up was a site that's owned by the state of Connecticut over which we have no local jurisdiction. So if you're talking about are there, what properties could be used for this based on it? Or, uh, uh, you know, looking at analysis, the way it stands today, those three lots, again, subject to each of their own kind of, um, uh, circumstances, would be eligible for this. Three Lake Avenue, the one at Crown Plaza and the one at One Reserve Road LLC.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Calitro, thank you very much. Ms. Ilinski, um, anything else? Did you, you good with that?
Yes.
Okay, um, and I'm looking now to see if there's any other commission members that have a, uh, comment. Uh, there's still a couple we haven't heard from yet. Commission members, Mr. Almeida.
I, I don't know if it's my background, you can't see my little hand there.
No, you know, I can't because of the background, yeah.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, you know, I, I do have some concerns about, uh, the way this is written. Um, I think this whole process has been kind of reverse engineered. And because of that, uh, you know, uh, the way this is written concerns me a little bit. I, I realize that it, it allows for four sites to have this use. And, and I realized that, you know, what we do here would be in perpetuity until, you know, it changes in the future by another commission. But three of these sites, as of right now, are not feasible, um, for this use. Basically limiting this use to one site. And, and I do have concerns that, um, I mean, I'm not a lawyer, I don't know if this is spot zoning. Uh, corporate council says it doesn't meet the legal requirements of, um, you know, spot zoning. But I do have concerns if the city is going to be, um, in litigation over this, um, just because of the way it's written. Um, I, I kind of wish that this wasn't reverse engineered. I don't know why it came about this way, but I do have concerns because of that. Um, I, and I also have concerns that, um, you know, the way this is written, it's basically like a one and done. Like, I, I actually think that this is legitimate and a good use. Um, I've seen the, the stuff that Pacific House has done in Stanford and I think it's great. I think that it's an asset to the communities there. But the way this is written, we're limited to this one site at this one location and that's it. Um, and, you know, it's unfortunate because I think that, you know, we could benefit from this use, you know, across the city, not just in this one location. Um, so I, I do have these concerns, um, you know, take it for what it is, but, um, yeah, that's it.
Well, thank you very much for your comments. I appreciate it. Um, commission members, looking for more input here, more discussion. Uh, Attorney Fay, I see your hand. Help yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Head. I have concerns with the way that the proposed amendment is written as well. A, a lot of what you said, Chairman, um, resonates with what I'm thinking as well. The applicant could have withdrawn their application and tightened it up a lot and, and, and I guess they still could, um, at some point, come back in front of this commission to do so. But looking at this property and at the Crown Plaza Hotel, um, there, this use seems inappropriate, given the residential character of the neighborhood and the size and location of, um, you know, the, the former hotels. I think the neighbor's concerns are very valid. I think, um, that, you know, the properties surrounding, um, this particular property on Lake Avenue are very middle-class, average neighborhoods. And I, if those people have to find, uh, another location in Danbury to live, it's going to be outside of Danbury. it's going to be outside of Danbury. They're very limited. It's, you know, Mill Ridge has changed in character throughout my lifetime. I went to elementary school there, and I would say today, when I drive through there, not necessarily today, but a year ago, two years ago, it's really cleaned up, and they did a really great job. High Ridge is no longer there. You know, there's beautiful apartments and basically starter homes for a lot of upcoming families. And I think to further burden people who are already swimming upstream is just not fair. I don't think it's a good thing for Danbury at this point. I think, you know, we obviously have a need for a homeless shelter. And we're, we're a city, we'll always have a need for a homeless shelter. But we don't need to be burdened with the rest of the state's plight. We just don't. I really, you know, I do a lot of work with homeless people, with mentally ill and people suffering addictions. And, you know, I think even some of those people are living at this facility right now. It's just not the right place. It really isn't. And I beg to differ that I think it would qualify as spot zoning. I mean, there are, are very few properties that, that this qualifies for. And I think we're really splitting hairs to, to include other properties in this description. I, I think a court could certainly find otherwise. And I'm not, you know, discounting Corporation Counsel's opinion, but I, I think it's, it's a very, very close call. And I, I just, I, I really struggled and have been struggling with this issue because it's, you know, but for the grace of God, it could be any one of us that need the, the the benefits and the opportunities that a place like Pacific House offers. I just really do not believe that this is in Danbury's best interest, and I think it does affect the health, welfare and safety of all of the neighbors in that area, including Mill Ridge and the Western Terrace neighborhood, probably all the way up to Anne Hath. You know, it, it really does change the character of that whole strip of Mill Plain, which, let's be honest, everything moved out of downtown over to the west side. And now, you know, we had restaurant owners and people on, you know, on the west side complaining about the, what they're seeing. I, I'm very concerned for our city and, you know, when, when we saw that chart of ninety-one percent of those who spoke in favor of, of the application being out of town residents, that really resonated with me as well. You know, it's great that everybody in Ridgefield and Reading and Bethel is all for Danbury sheltering their homeless. But what about us? You know, what about our citizens? I think we really need to listen to the neighbors and listens to the concerns. You know, some of it was anecdotal evidence, and not every person you see is homeless. But, you know, it definitely changes the character of the neighborhood. So I think there's a place for it in Danbury. I just don't think this is it.
Thank you, Attorney Fay. Appreciate it, the comments speaking up. Is there anyone else that would like to ask Attorney Fay of any question? Have any questions of her at this time? No. So I'm looking for other commission members to throw their head in the ring. I'm not going to call on anybody, put you on the spot, but I know that there are some that haven't spoken yet, and I'd like to hear some other opinions. Commission members, not hearing, not seeing. Mr. Hawley, I see your hand. Commissioner Hawley.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
Yeah, like everyone else on this commission, we've all been struggling with this. It's a very tough decision because we want to help the people and but we also want to represent our community, a community well, and also build a sustainable city for the future. And I'm, it's just hard, it's just tough. I'm the first member, I'm the first like term member of this commission. It's like biggest decision. So it's kind of difficult, but one thing I keep seeing is I feel like this right here would honestly hurt the neighborhood, or at least not necessarily hurt the neighborhood. I believe it would change the neighborhood. Obviously, the city of Danbury has been changing ever since it's been founded and it's seventeen hundreds. So change is a normal thing, and I believe this right here is one of the growing pains that we have as a larger city. We are the largest city by land in the city, in the town, in the state of Connecticut. And we're going to be coming across this issue more and more often. We're going to have more and more homeless people or people experiencing homelessness, excuse me, coming through our streets and asking for the services that a larger city could provide. But I, I don't believe putting a large transitional shelter facility would be the way to approach this because like Commissioner Almeida was saying, I think a better approach would be to have smaller shelters across the city, that type of thing, where it's large, something that Stanford has. And with this application right here, I believe the only two real buildings that would be affecting would be the Three Lake Avenue Extension one and also maybe the Crown Plaza, which are both large buildings. So I, I just wanted to say that I believe this isn't the right approach for this. By no means am I a housing expert, so I don't know if I can necessarily opine on that. This is just my opinion as a concerned citizen that I, I believe a better approach would be to have smaller shelters. That way it's not taking over a neighborhood. And if anything were to go wrong with these projects, the, it wouldn't have a deleterious effect to the surrounding area. And yeah, that's, that's kind of all I got right now.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate you speaking up. Commission members, anybody have any questions or want to discuss anything with Commissioner Hawley at this time? I don't see any, any other comments from any commission members? Any other comments from any commission members at this time? I see shaking heads, no.
Chairman.
Mr. Malolo, yes.
So I would just say, just from a raw kind of, and I think you may be going on this road as well, a little poll in my head, I think while we haven't maybe not achieved consensus because consensus would reflect maybe much more than a close vote, but I think we have kind of got the gauge of a majority of the commission, and I think we can be able to ask Ms. Calitro to offer one of the two motions into the record.
Mr. Malolo, back up two sentences. Somebody had a mic on and I missed what you said. And if everyone would please make sure that their mics are muted, please. I'm sorry, Mr. Malolo.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking we have a, we kind of have a head count as to which direction, at, at least the majority of the commission would be voting. And so therefore, I think we are safe in asking Ms. Calitro to, to, to share with her one of the resolutions that you had asked to be drafted.
You want her to share which resolution?
I think from my head count, I believe we have about five people who've all, who've spoken against the petition. So therefore, I believe she could probably offer that amendment, that, that resolution, but that's just my rough head count. I don't know if you kind of get gates the same numbers that I did.
You, you, you said you, you did a head count of five, which way?
Five people who are not comfortable with this.
Okay, I got it. Ms. Calitro, we, for some reason, I'm having, I'm hearing background here. Ms. Calitro. And before I go to you, Ms. Calitro, Mr. Malolo, yes, I think, I think I feel the same way unless anybody wants to speak up, not any commission members. It looks to me like the majority of the conversation this evening was would be looking to see what Ms. Calitro drafted a sample draft resolution to, to deny. So Ms. Calitro, are you able to do a screen share on that sample resolution to deny?
Sure, I can, Mr. Chairman. And before I do that, I just want to say for the record that not having had any input prior to your request that we do that, we, we, we kind of, I, I looked at the things I considered when I drafted both resolutions were both the same. I looked at about eight points. And I looked at them in the positive and in the negative sense. So I just wanted to get that on the record because I didn't have the benefit of knowing what your discussion was. So again, we can go back through it and modify it, so.
And I could tell without even looking at it. I know it was a monumental task, and I know it was very difficult to take for one person to take two completely opposite roles. So, but I, we do appreciate what you, what you do. So thank you very, very much.
Okay, I'm going to share my screen now. Let me just make sure I have the right one. Okay, can everybody see that? Okay, so this, this would then be a draft resolution for denial.
Can that be enlarged?
Can that be enlarged? Oh, you're.
If not.
If you go to view, Ms. Calitro, if you go to view and you increase the zoom, it should enlarge it.
View is underneath the word draft up at the top of.
Over next to review. No, it's over next to review.
Keep going.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Click on view and then go to zoom, change it to maybe like to one fifty or something. That should make it larger.
Oh, yeah, hold on. How's that?
Beautiful. Thank you so much. Sorry to bother you, but that, that works out good for everyone. Thank you.
Okay, can everybody see that? Because now you're all in my, you're on the little side of my screen, all the little faces, but I have a copy of it. So.
I have a little face.
Yeah, I have all the little faces on there. So again, it's a resolution by the City of Danbury Zoning Commission to deny the petitions submitted by Three Lake Avenue Extension LLC, Care of Pacific House to amend Sections Two B, Five B, Two B nineteen, and renumber the remaining uses and Five B five to add subsection G of the City of Danbury zoning regulations herein, hereafter the petition as amended, having found upon review of the petition, other documents and evidence submitted as part of the record and during the public hearing process, the following. So I'll just read them. I'll let you read them, and I'll read them as well. The addition of the new use in section two B entitled Transitional Shelter for the Homeless with the specific requirements is unacceptable as the use creates a facility that allows emergency shelter beds in an amount greater than twenty beds, which is the maximum number of beds the city has consistently allowed in uses defined as a shelter for the homeless in the CBD, C dash CBD and RH three zoning districts. Number two. Based on the list of existing uses contained within the zoning regulations and commensurate definitions, there is no necessity to add the new use as proposed. A shelter for the homeless is already currently defined. Number three. A shelter for the homeless is already permitted by grant of special exception in both the C dash CBD and RH three zoning districts. The commission finds sufficient land area exists within those two zones to locate a shelter for the homeless as currently defined and regulated. Number four. As to the similarity of the proposed use with existing uses in the CA eighty zone, the proposed new use is not comparable to uses already allowed as permitted or by special exception in said zone. Number five. While the petition presented an opportunity to add affordable units to the city's inventory of affordable housing for the purposes of the Affordable Housing Appeals List and any related Boratorium application, the benefit of the addition of units gained as part of a transitional shelter for the homeless is outweighed by the intensity of the use permitted by the petition and its adverse effects in the surrounding commercial and residential neighborhoods. Number six. The zoning commission acknowledges that the planning commission on September twenty first, twenty twenty one issued a positive referral on the petition, finding that, among other reasons as noted in their correspondence, the petition was consistent with the plan of conservation and development or P O C D. Number seven. The zoning commission has considered the consistency of the petition with the policies and recommendations of the P O C D as required pursuant to Connecticut General Statute Section eight dash three B and the zoning regulations, and finds that while aspects of the petition are consistent with recommendations of the Housing Plan Section of the P O C D, the use as proposed is dissimilar to and incompatible with existing uses in the general and limited commercial zone as identified on the land development plan map for, for the parcels within the CA eighty zone. Number eight. Notwithstanding correspondence and testimony in support of the petition, credible testimony from the residents in the vicinity of the existing emergency shelter at Three Lake Avenue Extension, operated by Pacific House under an executive order issued by the governor of the state of Connecticut, supports concerns that establishment of a permanent transitional shelter facility as could be established if the zoning amendments are approved may result in detrimental impacts to the public health, welfare and safety of the residents, residents and businesses of the surrounding area and could decrease property values. While the commission does not question the sincerity and dedication of the petitioner, its representatives and proponents of the amendments, the commission finds more credible the evidence as submitted by surrounding area business and property owners that demonstrates the adverse impacts on the health, safety and welfare already experienced with the, the Pacific House's current operation of the shelter and is not persuaded by the petitioner's promises that the adverse effects will not continue in the future. Oops, sorry. Number nine. The amendments as proposed raise the potential arguments that they result in spot zoning, which is illegal in the state of Connecticut. And number ten, as the commission is denying the amendment to define a transitional shelter for the homeless and its addition in the CA eighty zone, there is no necessity to amend the definition of dwelling unit or shelter for the homeless in section two B. Therefore, these amendments are commensurately denied. And then I just added in, the motion was made by and seconded by. So we, you have the opportunity to discuss what I've written. Again, I didn't have the benefit of any discussion with anyone. We can, you can add to it. I can type in this as we're moving along. So you can
Yes.
amend, edit, delete, add as you see fit.
Well, this is difficult to do with a screen share like this, but let me just ask globally if any commission members, if there's anything that, that stands out for comment, what we just looked at here, and I do not see a bunch of boxes here because of the screen share, but keep the screen share up.
I'm going to just reduce it so we can, I can see all of your faces there. I'm just going to bring it up to the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, and you know what I'm going to do? I'm going to try to see if I can make my window a little bit wider. I got, I have a few boxes here. Commission members, comments on this, on any of the language or any of the points that are in here? Is there anything that anybody wants to feel as though they want to add to this? Is there anything here that they see that they want to remove or modify from this? Seeing a hand of Mr. Almeida, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I, I definitely think point number nine is consistent with what I was trying to say before. If you scroll down, that the amendments as proposed raise a potential argument that they result in potential spot zoning, which is illegal in the state of Connecticut. So I think that, at least from my perspective, that should be in there.
Thank you very much. Anything else, commission members?
I'm sorry, did, did he say should be in there or should not be in there?
No, I, I'll let him speak to it, but I think Mr. Almeida said that he agrees with the point number nine. Is that correct, Mr. Almeida?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I agree with him, and I, and I believe it should be included in there.
Thank you. Attorney Fay, while I have you and your mic is open, you have any comment on this?
No, I, I really appreciate Sharon, Chair Sharon, you taking the time to do this. And I, I think I agree a hundred percent with how it's written because it really does acknowledge the strengths of the petition despite its shortcomings. And I, I think that we should acknowledge all of the evidence that was submitted, both in support and in opposition to this position, to this petition because it, it was so lengthy, and I, I think as a commission, we really are considering all of that evidence. So I think having it written right into the motion makes a lot of sense, and I appreciate that.
Thank you very much, Attorney Fay. Yes, Ms. Calitro, thank you for all of this work. Very, very detailed, and I know it was very, very difficult and time consuming, and thank you again. Commission members. Commission members, let's have some further comments on this. Mr. Malillo, is there anything, Ms. Hylinsky, that you wanted to talk about on this? Um, I can only see a few boxes, so I'm gonna ask any commission members to, if you have something to say, just say it because I'm not able to see hands.
Mr. Chairman, I can see all boxes. I
What do you, what do you got?
I might do, I might dual screen, hybrid teaching paid off. But, um, but
What do you got, anybody out there?
There is no commission member who is looking to raise their hand.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that. I appreciate it. Uh, so commission members, there we have it. We have a, uh, we have what we referred to as a, um, uh, sample draft resolution, which is a motion, um, of denial. Um, so I think at this point in time, uh, somebody might want to, uh, make a motion to, uh, adopt this resolution or to make a motion to, uh, put forth this resolution as a motion to deny. So commission members, is there anyone who wants to make a motion to deny, um, with using this as, uh, their denial and the reasons, um, put forth?
Mr. Chairman, can we see that, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can we see the draft for the approval just for fairness sake?
I'm sorry, say again.
Oops, sorry. I was asking if we can see the draft for the approval because I know not all, we didn't gather a consensus. So I feel like for fairness sake, we should see both drafts.
Um, I don't think that it would be, uh, I don't think that it would, um, hurt to see the, uh,
Chairman, I have to, I have to tend to disagree on that one because
Why is that?
And this is why, we had, um, five members of the commission spoke against the petition. Um, you, and we had some who did not speak and we are now asking Miss Calitro to share her reason for, or that, or in this instance, we would be asking Miss Calitro to share her reason to approve this petition. She's not an elected member of the zoning commission and I feel it would be unfair to put her in that position um, where one might be able to say that she was looking or, or had the potential of persuading um, zoning commission members to support a motion to approve. While we've asked her, uh, we, we, we spoke about, um, you know, being uncomfortable with this petition and we've asked her to present the, the resolution of denial. I wouldn't, I would not want to see anything, um, presented where she, she could be accused of trying to, um, persuade the commission to, to vote the other way.
Well, I only thought that maybe it would be useful because we, there was a couple of commission members that we did not hear from, although they had ample opportunity and I don't know if that would have skewed the, uh, um, the consensus before we went into this, but I see what you're saying. And I'm wondering if maybe, um, I could call on Attorney Castor Randy.
Before you, before you do that, Mr. Hadad, I would just remind the commission that a motion to deny, if approved, denies the petition. A motion to deny, if it's defeated, would need a motion to approve, um, to deny the, to be defeated, to actually deny the petition. And so therefore I would, I would reiterate, um, my thinking, which I've done in past meetings, where if that was the solution, we should have looked at the emotion to the, to, these are the reasons why it would be approved. Do we agree with these reasons why it would, should be approved? Yes or no? And then give it an up or down vote rather than say, you know what? We've seen the motion to, the resolution of denial and now we want to see the resolution of support. Um, I would say we have a motion, we have a resolution in front of us, a potential resolution in front of us, and if nobody's comfortable offering that motion into the record, then, you know, then we can decide what we're going to do. But, um, but I would be, I would not necessarily be in favor of putting, again, putting Miss Calitro into a position.
Well, it, it sounded like that's maybe where we were because I called for someone to, uh, uh, make the motion of denial and I didn't hear anything. So, you know, we were going, since I didn't hear anything, I mean, if you're interested in making the motion to deny, then deny it, then do it. But I didn't hear anything. So then the next obvious step was to entertain a request by someone to see the motion to approve. But if, if you want me to again, ask if there's any, they're willing, anyone they're willing to make this motion of, of denial. I mean, I don't know how long I should wait for, uh, this is a silence. So I'll say it again. Is there anyone here wishing to, um, um, make a motion to deny using this draft resolution, um, as its foundation? And Ms. Faye, is your hand up for a question or to do that?
Uh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sure I had it. Um, yes, I, uh, would like to take the opportunity. I know it's not popular. Um, but I think it is the right thing to do. I would like to make a motion to deny the petition um, of specific, uh, Pacific House for Three, Three Lake Avenue Extension, um, for the reasons set forth in a draft resolution of denial prepared by, um, Ms. Sharon Calitro.
Thank you very much. Is there a second? Mr. Jody, I see, I see a couple as Mr. Jodis. You're seconding that?
Yes, I am.
Seconded by Mr. Jody. Commission members, discussion. Is a motion to deny, uh, using the draft resolution as the denial, uh, by Ms. Faye, seconded by Mr. Jody, and we are now at the portion of discussing this. Mr. Malillo.
Mr. Chairman, can I just, you need to still up on the screen because otherwise
I'm sorry, say it again, please.
Do you need the draft still up on the screen or do you want me to stop sharing?
Um, I don't know. Does anybody need to see the draft still? I'm good with, I'm good with it being removed. I don't know if anybody wanted to use it as a, why don't you take it down for now?
I can, yes, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I could just see you all this.
Oh, here we go. Now we got everybody. Okay, so we have a motion to deny made by Ms. Faye, seconded by Mr. Jody, and now we're gonna go to discuss that. And I think Mr. Malillo, um, had his hand raised. Mr. Malillo, and I think Mr. Almeida also after that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm going, I'm intending to vote against this motion to deny. Uh, I want to emphasize though that my motion or my vote against the motion to deny, I would, do not want to be misconstrued necessarily as being a blatant vote yes for the, um, for the, for the, this property location. I really truthfully believe that should be, um, a planning commission decision, uh, where there would, where there would be more, more, um, site-specific information, uh, much more of a elaborate plan presented, um, and, and that's, and that's their task and their purview, um, not our purview. We, um, I, we are looking at the entire zone use and not a specific neighborhood use, um, you know, for, for that reason. So for, so, so while there are some parts in the motion to deny that I could approve with or might be, um, apt to approve with, um, the overall majority of it, I'm going to be voting against, uh, for some of the reasons I've stated earlier.
Thank you very much. You raise good points. Um, and let's have some further discussion. Mr. Almeida, you had your hand raised earlier. Uh, the motion made to deny second.
Chairman, I was gonna second the motion.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Uh, any, any further discussion, commission members? Any discussion? Motion made to deny with a second, any discussion? So we are now going to go to a roll call. Um, a yes is to deny. A yes agrees with the denial. All right. And I think I'm looking to see who has their mics off. So if commission members would just unmute your mic. Thank you, Mr. Massey, Mr. Kelly. Um. Yep, there you go. Um, so there's a motion to deny, a yes is to deny. Uh, Ms. Faye.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Jody.
Yes.
Mr. Almeida.
Yes.
Mr. Hawley.
Yes.
Ms. Hylinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Oh.
Mr. Kelly votes no. Mr. Massey.
No.
Mr. Massey votes no. Mr. Malillo.
No.
Mr. Malillo votes no. And I will vote yes. One, two, three, four, five, six, six to three. Six to three, meaning that this petition has been denied. And I think that's, uh, that's all she wrote on this petition. Commission members, thank you so, so much for all of the time, effort spent. Um, appreciate it and, uh, let's move on now to the rest of our agenda this evening. Under new business. We have number one, petition of SC Ridge Owner LLC to amend the master plan approved June 23rd, 2020 and amended May 11th, 2021. Public hearing is scheduled for January 11th, 2020, January 11th, 2022. Woo! Uh, commission members, do I have a motion to receive this petition, refer it to the planning commission for their recommendation, notify all surrounding communities that it needs to be notified according to state statutes, publish it in the town clerk's office and all of the necessary required publications according to state statutes, and set the public hearing date as it is scheduled on this evening's agenda, which is subject to change depending on circumstances later COVID-19, which is January 11th, 2022. Commission members. Nobody wants to talk. Attorney Faye, yes.
I will move to move it.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Almeida. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Um, let me ask, is there a, uh, this application, this next application on 16 Walnut Street for the used car dealer's license, motor vehicle used car, did we refer that out too?
No, that does not to be, uh, or that's, yeah, administrative action on our, on RBS.
Thank you. I didn't think so. Let me just read that and do, this is dated for January 25th, 2022, application of Giuseppe Angelo and Victor Di Simone and property owners for Blazius Auto, 16 Walnut Street, I-11051, I-11052, I-11053, and I-11054 for a certificate of, for a certificate of location approval for a motor vehicle used dealers, used car dealer's license in the CG20 zone, public hearing again scheduled for January 25th, 2022. The only correspondence we have, um, is the meeting schedule for 2022 and that is a link that we can click and put it away, put it on your desktop. Um, I'll go to, for reference only, before I go to other matters, for reference only, there's a petition to the City of Danbury by Sharon B. Calitro, Planning Director, to amend Sections 3C, 10B, 2 and 10C, 4 parentheses, A, parentheses, 2 of the zoning regulations. Amendments pursuant to Public Act 21-29, opt out of parking requirements, amend zoning permit fee schedule to add provision authorizing charging a fee for expert consultant and amend language in additional requirements for approval of special exceptions to special permits relative to the use of the word "character" in quotations. Uh, public hearing scheduled for December 14th, 2021. Uh, commission members, under, for other matters, I'd like to, if I can, say, Mr. Malillo, you want to go first? I'll yield to you.
Sure, I'll, I'll, I, sure, I will give you the opportunity as a chair to wrap things up. Um, I wanted to just take a moment, Mr. Hadad, Mr. Chairman, and, um, uh, note that we have, uh, let's see, one, two, three, four individuals who, uh, will not be returning, um, next month. Uh, two are moving on to the greener pastures of the city council. Um, you know, I don't know whether it's greener pastures or not, but it's at least perceived as being greener pastures. So I want to, um, wish both Mr. Massey and, uh, Mr. Eric Quinze well, as they, as they, as they, uh, go to the one meeting a month phenomenon.
Thank you. They don't, they don't go to 2:14 in the morning over there, do they?
Yo, that is known, that is known as the city council. Um, I also want to, so I want to wish them, wish them luck, wish them well. Uh, I want to, uh, thank both Mr. Kelly and Mr. Almeida, uh, for their service on the zoning commission. I've served, we've served with both of them for quite a few years. Um, and they both, over the years, have demonstrated that it puts the best interest and the welfare of the city of Danbury, the citizens of the Danbury, um, first and foremost in all that we do. We really are not a political commission. We usually leave politics at the, at the door side at the, when we walk into the council chambers and we, and we, we, we do work wholeheartedly in the best interest of the city of Danbury. And both of those individuals have done so and have done, done that time and again, um, in their service to the city and just wanted to thank them for their service and the amount of the time that they have, um, dedicated to serving our great city. And lastly, since he's here, I also, he's moving back to the city council, but I want to thank the mayor, um, for the work that he's done. Um, having to, uh, you know, to step up into the trying times and, and, and lead us through the transition out of COVID. Um, I know we're not completely out of COVID yet, but we're at least transitioning out, I hope. And, uh, and he did a, I, I feel as though he did a nice job. So I just want to publicly rec, uh, recognize the mayor, um, for, for the work that he did as well.
So, so Mr. Malillo, thank you for those kind words. So now let me just say this. I have one extra person to thank. So in thanking Mr. Almeida, Mr. Massey, Mr. Eric Quinze, Mr. Kelly and, and Mayor Joe, uh, thank you very much. I'm gonna thank Mr. Malillo because he said everything I was gonna say. So I don't have to say it. But of course, that's what I was gonna say and that's what I reserved for other matters. Um, I enjoyed working with everyone and it has been a pleasure. And Mr. Kelly, I enjoyed so much in our day back before I had my unfortunate incident with my, with my eyesight, when we used to talk about the, the marathons and the, uh, 5Ks and all the running that we used to do. Uh, I enjoyed that quite a bit and I miss, I miss that quite a bit like I'm sure you do and like I'm going to miss you on this, on this, uh, um, commission as well. Mr. Kelly, you've been a good friend over the years and, uh, I appreciate all of, all of your work and your effort as are the other people here, good friends and good colleagues and, uh, it's appreciated very, very, very much and you serve Danbury proud and, um, I, I, I can't, I can't say, I can't say more other than I, I wish you were still gonna be here, but, uh, we all move on and the calendar days change. Uh, any other matters, commission members, any other matters, any other matters? Mr. Almeida.
This might be my last time, uh, to speak, so I want to take advantage, if I may.
Go ahead, take your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, for the kind words and, and also, uh, Commissioner Malillo, who also happens to be my neighbor. So he's absolutely right. Um, you know, this, this isn't partisan. Uh, you know, we're all neighbors and friends of one another and, um, I'm, I'm gonna miss you guys. I'm gonna miss everyone here. Uh, it was fun. You know, hopefully I'll, I'll still attend some of the meetings. So, you know, I don't think you've quite gotten rid of me just yet. Um, but, um, I'll definitely, uh, be missing, uh, these meetings. And, um, yeah, one final thing, I do want to thank Mr. Dodo. I don't know if he's still here, but, um, you know, he, he brought me one step closer to having seen everything in my life. Uh, with, with the exhibits that he presented, I, I never thought I'd be sitting in a zoning meeting, um, seeing some of the exhibits that, uh, I witnessed. Um, that was very interesting. Um, this, this last few months was, was a ride. Um, these were some of the longest meetings I've ever attended in my life, but, um, I'm gonna miss you guys. I'm gonna miss Eric and thank you.
Thank you very much. Feelings mutual. We're gonna miss you as well. You know, I see there's only 39 people here left. I really wanted to say when we had the 120 and 140 and 180 people here, I, I, I wanted to somehow squeeze in, but I didn't have any appropriate uh, way to do it. But I hope the people that were here for the last couple of months were able to watch how this operates and to say that you came here speaking to something that was near and dear to your heart, whether it's the people here in favor or the people in opposition. But please look us up, uh, continue to come to the Zoom meetings, continue to say things in different parts of Danbury. Um, say something. This is a, this is a powerful, um, microphone for you all and and it's really no big deal to come, when, when we're done with the Zoom, to come live and in person and, and see us all. You could see how much, how much shorter, fatter, uglier and older that I am in person, uh, but stay involved. Uh, and, and who else, anybody else have any more comments to say, commission members? Mr. Jody.
Yes, to the four commission members that we are losing. Um, I just want to let them know, it, it was unfortunate that we had to do this on Zoom because we didn't get to, to talk and see and shake hands and so forth. It, it was a tough two years. But commission members, you know, two years goes by fast and, um, jump back on again. We'd love to have you.
Thank you, Mr. Jody. Beautiful. Uh, Mr. Kelly.
I want to thank everybody, uh, and I enjoyed my time in, in the, uh, on the commission. And, uh, thank you very much for all the nice comments. Thank you.
Absolutely, Mr. Kelly. You, you deserve, you deserve all the nice comments. You truly do. Anyone else? Ms. Hylinsky.
I also wanted to say thank you to the commission members that are, uh, gonna be leaving and also good luck in all your future endeavors. But I also want to say thank you to, um, Commissioner and Chairman Hadad for all your hard for all your hard work and, um, especially with the, uh, last three months that we've been, uh, going over this, uh, very difficult decision. And, um, also to Joanne, uh, for doing these beautiful job on the minutes, and to Sharon, um, for all of her work to the, um, Corporation Council, how beautifully they work, they all work together for what's best for the city. And of course, to, um, my mayor, um, my mayor Joe. Good luck, sir. And, um, I wanted to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you very much. Same, same to you as well and to everyone. Yeah, one of the best parts about having a lot of, uh, people come in on these Zoom meetings over the last couple of months is they were really able to see how we are so lucky to have the staff that we have, Ms. Reed and Ms. Calitro, and when we lean on some of the other professionals, um, within, uh, within the city. Um, we, we re, we really, really are something. I, I just, I just love Danbury, and I know this isn't about me, but my family came to Danbury in eighteen eighty eight. So we've been here since the eighteen hundreds and and, um, I've always been here, and our family's always been here, and and we just love it. And everyone on this commission and the staff love it. And everybody that watches us knows of our passion and our love of Danbury, and it's just a great, great, great city. And I don't know if anybody else has anything to, anything else to say. Uh, Mr. Mazzy, yes?
Yeah, I, I just want to say thank you to all you guys, you know, worked for the last couple of years, been great being on the commission with you. And, um, sure, I'll be stopping in to say hello or see what's going on, uh, on the zoning end. So, uh, everyone have a happy Thanksgiving and appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, please look, look in on us. Make, make sure, make sure we're behaving. Anything else, commission members? Any other matters? Any other matters? Any other matters? For the record, I will entertain a motion to adjourn at nine fifty one P M. Anybody? Why don't we give the honor to Mr. Kelly, if I could? I'm sorry, other commission members. I'd like Mr. Kelly to make this motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Is there a second? Who wants to second that? Mr. Mazzy, we'll let you
Thank you, Michael.
Any discussion, any comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. That the record show, we have adjourned at nine fifty two. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
God bless you all. Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.